And welcome to the July 25th regular meeting of the Clifton Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Mahia will be late today, and Commissioner Canova has a family obligation. Mr. Shahada, please call the roll.
Ms. Bassford?
Here.
Mr. Brunsack?
Here.
Mr. Canova? Mr. Mahia? Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Ms. Siano?
Here.
Ms. Juarez?
Here.
Vice President Danny?
Here.
President Perez?
Here.
We have a call.
The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city's clerk's office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape-recorded in accordance with policy 0168. Do we have a student representative with us this evening? Seeing none, probably summer vacation. We will see Jada, I'm sure, soon enough. Okay, moving on, we will do presentations of reports. Okay, we're changing the order a little bit this evening. Mr. Doctor, apologies, but we'll get back to you in a moment. Assistant Superintendent Gengaro will make some comments.
Thanks, President Perez. Thank you, President Perez. Before we get into any formal business at this evening's Board of Ed meeting, we would like to begin by informing our one Clifton learning community that Dr. Robert Tozzi underwent cardiac surgery this morning and will be placed on a medical leave for the next three months. We are excited to share that this procedure was a success, and he's currently in recovery at the hospital as we speak. We have no doubt that he will return stronger and healthier than ever, with a great team in place from our Board of Ed Commissioners to our Central Administration to the entire staff. We are confident that the district operations will continue to run smoothly in Dr. Robert Tozzi's absence. We do look forward to welcoming him back with opening arms upon his return, and he will surely be missed during his timeout. But for the time being, we do ask that any and all questions that you do have about the district are directed directly to myself and Mr. Shahada during his absence. We will continue to keep the community updated on his progress throughout his recovery, and your thoughts, your prayers, and your positive vibes are greatly appreciated for him during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gengaro. Our thoughts and prayers are with Dr. Robert Tozzi for his speedy recovery. Okay, now we'll go to presentations, reports. Mr. Doctor, I believe, has a report to share with us.
Sorry, I missed it. I'm sorry.
Good evening, President Perez. Vice President Danny, Board of Education Commissioners, Assistant Superintendent Gengaro, and Central Administration. I'm here this evening to do our second half and end-of-the-year presentation on HIBs, Student Safety Data Systems, Violence and Vandalism and Substance Abuse Reports, Preliminary Determination Report, Restraint and Seclusion Report, and the Self-Assessment Report Card for HIBs. We're required to make this presentation twice a year. First is in January, when we present for everything that went on for the first part of the school year, September through December, and then from January through June, we have Period Two, which we're reporting tonight, along with the end-of-the-year report. For our HIB trainings and programs, those are all for, as I said, July 31st to December 31st. So those can actually go on during the summer, and then Report Two is from January 1st through June 30th. Incidents that occur are just recorded during the school year. There are no summer recordings for those. First is going to be our SSDS. This is the platform with the state where we report all of our violence, vandalism, and substance abuse cases, along with our HIBs and our HIB trainings and programs. Just as a refresher, our violence, vandalism, and substance abuse cases range, these are the ones from the state, obviously because of our district. We do not hit many of these. We don't have incidents of arson, thankfully. Obviously, we have fights and alleged HIBs and confirmed HIBs, but some of the more egregious cases don't really affect us and haven't for some time. Our Period Two and yearly numbers, when you look at these numbers, for the most part, they stayed the same from one year to the next. Christopher Columbus Middle School, Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and the high school, high school actually had a significant drop, and Woodrow had a drop as well. You will notice that our elementary schools had a relatively large increase. That's twofold. One is because of the reporting that's done and how some things have changed at the elementary level. The other is, unfortunately, we had three children at the elementary level that accounted for nearly two-thirds of those incidents. While we were dealing with the issues that they might have had, we still had to log them in as violence, vandalism, and substance abuse cases. However, those tailed off at the end because we were able to make the necessary adjustments for those children. Next, we're going to talk about HIBs. A HIB is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. There are two things that need to be present. One is a distinguishable characteristic. Basically, why is someone different than another person, whether it's race, color, gender, sexual orientation? It's a reason for picking on someone, not just, "I don't like you, I'm going to pick on you." If that's the case, then it won't categorize as a HIB. If there is a reason for it, then it would. And the other that needs to be present is a substantial disruption. Unfortunately, a child being a little upset or shedding a few tears about a situation, although it might be upsetting, especially for the child and the parent, it wouldn't raise to the level of a HIB. But if we start to see a pattern of situations such as not wanting to go to school, not eating, not sleeping, a drop in grades, not keeping friends, acting withdrawn, things like that would constitute as a substantial disruption. If we have both of those, we would have a HIB. And you could see our numbers throughout the district stayed pretty much the same this year, dipped a little in some places across the board. We had a tiny bit of a raise in our yearly HIBs, of alleged HIBs, but again, an alleged HIB is just somebody brings up the word bullying, we investigate it. Okay? If a parent-child says, "I'm being bullied, my child's being bullied," we do look into it. There are some cases, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, that we categorize as preliminary determination. We actually don't do an investigation that leads to a HIB case. We're able to ascertain by looking at the facts presented to us right off the bat that it's not going to lead to that. Okay? Often, it has something to do with, we know that there's not an upset child off of it. Like, they come in willingly, just, "This kid's picking on me." Is it upsetting you? "No, I just want it to stop." Okay, so you brought it to us, you made it sound like it could be a HIB, so we're going to look into it, but we're not doing the full investigation because we know that there's not a substantial disruption for it. And with those, we had 18 cases, because we now, that we are a district that uses that policy, we've been required to report that to the state, and we had 18 cases this year of preliminary determination. Last year, we had 16, so pretty much stayed the same. Restraint and seclusion, this is mostly done by the Special Ed Department, although any sort of restraint, we don't have seclusion in our district, but we have to report it if there is. But any sort of restraint that's done, we have to report the times where they happen at the higher levels, like the high school, middle schools. It's usually because of a fight, we have to restrain somebody. And then as we move lower in elementary and the CELEA buildings, if we have a child who can't control themselves and is in danger of hurting themselves or someone else, that might have to be done. But we follow all state guidelines with that. All of our reporting is done immediately with that, and all of our documentation is kept on that as well. During the year, we have trainings and programs. Trainings for HIBs are things that are done with staff to try to inform them of what's going on and what to look for, how to combat bullying, and the same with students. Okay? It's training them on how to do something or what to notice. Programs are a little bit different. They can encompass trainings, but they also can be larger, like PBSIS, which is a district-wide initiative. That would be a program that tries to combat bullying in its own way, okay? By changing how people see each other, how people react to each other. So there are a lot of different parts of that. You could see that the trainings and programs throughout the district vary. Everyone has the requisite number of what's needed for trainings and programs. Some buildings have more, some buildings have less, some buildings do it in different parts of the year. They may not have very many in the beginning of the year, have a lot more in the second half of the year. Some buildings that don't have an issue with bullying may have less than a building that has had a history of bullying cases. They may have some more to try to combat that. We also are required, at the end of the year, to do a self-assessment of each building and provide a score for our anti-bullying efforts. And you could see that this is quite a large undertaking. There are a lot of questions involved, a lot of different elements and points associated with this, and you could see, we do a comparison from year to year, and even though the numbers are very similar throughout, unfortunately, this isn't very indicative of what has gone on because the questions changed this year. The state changed probably about 12 of the questions, so while they're not exactly the same, they are still similar to what was asked last year, so we did do the comparison on paper for everybody, but it's not an exact comparison from one year to the next. And from all of this, we've identified some areas where we might need some improvement. We are going to be focusing collaboration with the building principals and anti-bullying specialists to look at trends in HIBs and code of conduct violations. We've already started that with our Big Three, the high school and two middle schools, and started developing plans for next year, so we know what we want to focus on tying in PBSIS to assist them. HIB professional development is going to be done, as it is yearly, for all staff members. We're going to be doing an online program for them that they can complete at their own pace. District-wide implementation of MTSS, you'll be hearing more about that in the coming board meetings. That ties into some things that we do with bullying and discipline. Reviewing and revising the discipline matrix to work on making discipline infractions less punitive and more rehabilitative. We're working with the elementary schools and the middle and high school to try to find different ways to deal with infractions that we have, not just discipline, suspension, out-of-school suspension, finding other ways to handle that. And then a more focused code of conduct coding within real time, so we can take the data more accurately. Instead of having broad categories, we have found specific infractions, and we've actually put those into real time. You approve those during a board meeting for a change of policy in order to put those 12 new infractions in. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Perez? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doctor. Like, on Slide Five, the violence, vandalism, substance abuse, the Period Two and yearly comparison?
Yes.
For Period Two and the yearly, for the elementary schools, there was like a considerable jump there. I mean, just to maybe clarify for the public, why or what did you find to be the reasons for the significant, from like 30 to 29 and 6 to 38?
Okay. That was because of some changes that we did in the reporting, and also, we had a handful of students that caused those issues. The reporting that we did has been consistent. We just had it a little bit more focused on making sure that if there was, say, contact made, even though it may not have been in a violent way, that it was still recorded, so we could have all of that. Okay. Ms. Juarez?
Thank you, President Perez. And just for clarification on that point, so the numbers rose because the kind of reporting, meaning you have to document every single time contact was made within students regardless if it was a HIB?
Yes.
Or violent? Okay, I understand. Thank you for that. And then I had another question regarding, and you did address what determined the higher numbers in particular in some elementary schools. I see some are significantly higher, and you touched upon it on identified areas of improvement. So I was just curious to know what is being done for those schools with significantly higher numbers of HIB, with trainings and programs on a holistic level, what's being done within the school insofar as collaborating with principals and anti-bully specialists?
Well, the numbers that you see are the actual trainings and programs. They have nothing to do with the actual cases of HIBs for that specific building. It's what the building reported as far as meetings that occurred, trainings that occurred that associate with trying to lower HIB numbers or inform students and staff of what is a HIB, how to deal with it, and how to try to have it not happen anymore. To go along with that, we're looking at the overall numbers for this year and ones that were a little bit lower than what we would have liked. We're speaking with those principals and giving them a roadmap to increase those numbers. And some of it is just, there are some meetings that occur, PBSIS meetings, school security meetings, that they may not have registered with us, even though they had these meetings and they've had them for various reasons. They can also be reported here, and we think that a couple of them may have missed that, and we're working to resolve that, even though they did have those.
Thank you so much. And so for clarification, those that have more trainings are just based on building administration and their choice, whether or not?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
President Perez?
Ms. Santiago?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Doctor. So in terms of the violence, vandalism, substance abuse, with the middle schools and the high schools, those numbers actually drastically dropped.
Yes.
So can you give us some insight into that?
That is from the administration and subsequently their staff members, working with students, trying to deal with situations before they get to that point. There was obviously an increase the last couple of years because we were coming off of COVID. Students were not with each other as much, and there was obviously an issue coming back, especially when you might be moving from one grade level to the next, from, say, elementary to middle, middle to high school. There was a little bit of an issue there, and we saw a rise in our VVSA numbers at that point. But with the work of our administrators and their staff, they've worked on trying to head those issues off early. So less fights, there was a significant drop in fights, especially at the high school, trying to handle those. And we have different means that we take care of that before it gets to that point, and they were very successful with that, and they look to improve on that even more next year.
So like PBSIS or other initiatives, are those something?
In fact, I was just going to piggyback on what Mr. Doctor was saying, and you took the words out of my mouth, Commissioner Santiago. What we're starting to see are the long-term effects of implementing PBSIS district-wide. Now that every school has gone through their initial universal prevention tier training, and the majority, in fact, all have also completed their secondary tier training, we're starting to see those long-term effects. What we anticipate, as you can see, the numbers are going down at the middle school level, we're going to see that consistent drop in those types of numbers in years to come while implementing with fidelity.
Thank you both. One last question. I'm not done, sorry. One last question. And in terms of the HIBs, what do we have in terms of communication to our students to, you know, it's okay to come forward, it's okay to communicate that? How do they do that? And, I mean, we have counselors and others, right? Who are the safe or safe places to come forward and do that? And that, you know, we have this whole, I'm looking at the elementary numbers, and then it kind of goes down, which is great, and we go to Clifton High, and it's very low. So more of this whole snitch stigma kind of a thing, and just anything we do about communication to our students that it's okay to come out and share that.
So inherently, based on the age level and understanding of the children, elementary, middle school, you're going to have more of that because that's how they deal with conflict. At the high school, fortunately, sometimes it gets physical and it doesn't turn into bullying, it goes a different route. So that's one of the reasons why the numbers are different. But as far as informing students on how to report, a lot of times, the students do feel comfortable with the people in their buildings, whether it's a counselor, a teacher, an administrator. Parents are very comfortable with reaching out. Some of them don't want to reach out to the school for whatever reason, they'll reach out to me because my information's on the website, and being the anti-bullying coordinator for the district, I get a lot of issues that come to me, and I bring them to the school to investigate. But also, we have, on our website, we have a hipster platform where they can report anonymously, which is strictly for HIB, and we have the Say Something program for middle and high school students, which they can report anonymously online. They can actually report right from their phones if they wanted to. That is for everything. That's for violence, that's for threats, whether to the building, to another person, but bullying is also on there as well.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Bassford?
Thank you, Mr. Doctor, for a very comprehensive report. The increase in security personnel, do you feel that that, especially in the upper grades, is what's going on there because they're seeing the effects of the calmness in the buildings because of those security offices that we have now in the buildings?
Absolutely, and it's one more, several more trusted people that students can come to and work with instead of going towards violence or just not being able to report being bullied because they don't have someone. This is just another person, but also the work that they do. I was an administrator for quite a while at the high school, vice principal, principal. We're pulled in a million different directions. We're not in the halls 24/7 to see what goes on, but we do have a security specialist who might see something start to happen and will intercede and separate it so it doesn't get to that point of a fight. So having them has definitely been a benefit throughout the district, not just at the high school and middle schools, but all around.
We just have to work on, we have to work on the elementary now, and what, as a board, can we do for you to help you with this?
Just keep supporting us as you have.
We always do.
And this is getting better. Yes, those numbers are up for elementary. When I see you next year, we're hoping that those numbers are significantly lower like they were last year, and that is going to be our focus this school year. Anyone else? I have, Ms. Brunsack, did you want to say something? No, okay. I have a couple of questions or comments. The security specialists, do they go through the HIB training as well in their buildings? Yes, oh, absolutely. When they are hired, I personally work with each one of them about what they're supposed to do, plus they have to go through the professional development that all of our staff members do. Do they, are they also involved in reporting HIBs? They do have to report. If they need to, they would report to an administrator. That's part of their training. So has there been any correlation between, because we didn't have security specialists for, and now we have 30, close to 40?
Forty.
Are we seeing more reports coming from them? Is that part of the increase because they're seeing more? With bullying, not necessarily. Definitely with VVSA's, their input has definitely been noticed. With bullying, there have been some situations where they, where a student has come up to them and they report it to an administrator. We do see it periodically, but there isn't any one aspect where we see that. It's not like all kids go to their counselor, all kids go to an administrator. It's whoever they feel comfortable with, and our security specialists are people that these students feel comfortable with. So when we do have it, and if that's the person that they work with and that they feel comfortable with, they will go and talk to them, and they will report to us. Thank you very much for a very thorough report. Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Doctor. Amen? Amen? Is there somebody woman here now? Yes? Okay. Okay, we're going to change the order a little bit again today because we have a special guest. We have our Assemblywoman Bagoli here today, and she's here to make some presentations. So I'm going to invite her up to the podium if she likes.
Thank you so much for having me this evening, and it's my honor and pleasure to represent the 27th Legislative District, which this year includes Clifton. Welcome to the 27th Club. I always love to, I'm also a school superintendent, a 24-year vet, so whenever I see amazing things happening in the district, and you have a great superintendent who loves to reach out and tell us what's going on and keeps us legislators informed. I met with him a couple of months back, and one of your board members, Judy Bassford, received a, oh, I'm sorry. I saw you point, and I thought it was towards me. I'm sorry?
Congrats.
Yeah, we were at the committee together, yes. We went to the Passaic County Education's Ball, and, you know, where Judy was honored, and the superintendent said, you know, "Our Board of Education also just completed a state certification and was certified by School Boards Association, and we'd love to honor our board. They do so much for ourselves." So I'm going to start with the Board of Education, and thank you for your hard work and dedication on behalf of the students in Clifton. But, you know, to finish board certification, we have so many boards across the state that don't reach that level of training needed in order for you to be able to do your jobs effectively for the benefit of the students of Clifton. So that is, you know, an amazing honor, and I wanted to come out here tonight and present to you with a state proclamation, not just from myself, but it's a joint legislative proclamation. It's a resolution coming from Senator McKeon, Assemblywoman Cuyasos-Gill, and of course, my office. So I'm just going to read a little bit to you. It says, whereas the honor, wait, wrong one. We're starting with the wrong one. It says, "The Clifton Board of Education, highly esteemed throughout the Garden State, has earned certification from the New Jersey School Boards Association. The Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey are pleased to recognize the Clifton Board of Education upon this auspicious occasion, which bears witness to the immeasurable contributions this outstanding organization has made to the benefit of the students and their families throughout many years. And whereas to earn this prestigious designation, the members of the Clifton Board of Education participated in 16 hours of training, completed a policy wellness check, and submitted a bargaining agreement to the New Jersey School Boards Association Labor Relations Team, and they further demonstrated their unwavering commitment to effective governance by conducting further demonstrated their unwavering commitment to effective governance by conducting a thorough self-evaluation. And whereas the following individuals are lauded and commended for their dedication in pursuit of excellence, President Alan Paris, Vice President Dr. Lucy Danny, Commissioner Judith Basford, Commissioner Tanya Suarez, Commissioner Joe Canova, Commissioner Richard Mejia, Commissioner Mark Brunciak, lost my spot, Joseph, Commissioner Joseph Siano, Commissioner Anthony Santiago, Superintendent of Schools Dr. Danny Robertosi, Assistant Superintendent of Schools Mark Jengao, and Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Administration Janina Kozalovitz, did I get it close? And whereas the leaders of tomorrow are made in classrooms each day across New Jersey, and the people of this state are genuinely indebted to public spirit citizens, exemplified by the members of the Clifton Board of Education, who devote their time, energy, and talents in the featherings of an astute, engaged, and informed populace, now therefore be it resolved that by the Senate and the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey, that this legislature hereby congratulates the Clifton Board of Education, pays tribute to its notorious record of service and leadership, and extends sincere best wishes for continued vigor in all the years to come. Be it further resolved that this has been duly authenticated, this resolution has been signed by the Senate President and Assembly Speaker, and attested by the Secretary and the Assembly Clerk, transmitted to the Board of, Clifton Board of Education." You know, and I want to say to parents who are listening here today, each member of the Board of Education, everything that you heard me outline, we are public servants. We are here for you. No one who sits on the board is paid a dime to put in the hours that are required to make sure that every one of the students of Clifton receive a quality education. We're not always going to make everyone happy, but the time that you're putting in, the energy that you're putting in, the dedication that you show to the children of the city of Clifton is not going unnoticed, and on behalf of the state and the Senate, we thank you. So. As I said at the beginning, I've been in public education for a long time. I've been a advocate of special education for many, many years. And even when my young son was born, I had children born pre-me and one on the autism spectrum. And as a parent who has a child with a special needs and as an educator, I'm not going to lie, you go a little batty, how am I going to help my child? I'm a teacher, I'm supposed to know how to teach my child, I'm supposed to know how to navigate the world of education. But when you have, when it's your own child, the story gets a little different. And I had the honor of meeting Judith Basford through my journey of learning how to navigate my world of special education as a teacher and as a parent of a child of special needs. And when I met Judy, we created, we bonded, and we have stayed friends for many years, as many parents of kids with special needs tend to do. And through the years, I have seen her tenacity and her dedication and fervent advocacy of, I don't want to just say children of special needs, but all children, and even adults who are in need of supports and services and how to advocate for families. So I was not surprised when I arrived at the Passaic County Education Association's award dinner, and I saw my friend Judy be honored with the Friend of Education Award. There are individuals that you meet in this life that you look at their heart and you say they're in it for the right reasons. Not only has the Clifton Board of Education been fortunate to have her on this board, but the fact that the Passaic County Education Association acknowledged that, today the state of New Jersey will acknowledge that as well. So I'm going to go ahead and read another joint resolution. Whereas the Honorable Judith Basford, a highly esteemed resident of the Garden State, has been bestowed with the prestigious Friend of Education Award by the Passaic County Education Association. Whereas the Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey are pleased to recognize Judith Basford upon this auspicious occasion and commend the immeasurable contributions she has made throughout many years, which have earned her the illustrious honor. And whereas in 2011, Judith Basford has served with the utmost distinction as a member of the Clifton Board of Education, a superb tenure marked by her dedicated efforts on the Finance, Residency, Negotiations, Policy, and Education Committees, and informed by her many volunteer experiences, including a Vice President of the Clifton Against Substance Abuse and as a co-founder of the Clifton Parents Requiring Action Information Special Education Prize, and as a longtime member of her local home and school association. And whereas deeply appreciated for her accomplishments as the immediate past President of the Passaic County School Boards Association, she has garnered the respect and admiration of her neighbors, her fellow citizens, for her tireless advocacy at the state level, having held the enormously consequential post of Legislative Representative for the 37th, and now the 27th Legislative District. And an array of accolades bear witness to her high regard in which she is held by all who know her steadfast determination to open doors of opportunities for New Jersey's youngest residents and place them on the path to the future success. Whereas the leaders of tomorrow are made in the classrooms each day across New Jersey, and the people of this state are genuinely indebted to the hard-working and inspiring individuals that are exemplified by those like Judith Basford, who devote their time, energies, and talents in the featherings of an astute, engaged, and informed populace. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and the General Assembly that this legislature hereby congratulates Judith and pays tribute to her record of service, leadership, and commitment, and I thank you for your commitment to the citizens of Clifton." Thank you to the board for, you know, inviting me to come and do this, and I'd love to have a picture with all of you with your proclamation, if that's okay? I'll hold it, yeah, or maybe the board president can hold it. It's actually my honor to be able to come out and do these wonderful things, and if there's any time that you want me to come by and honor your students, I would love to do that as well. I know that great things are happening in Clifton, and as we honor the adults, we also like to make sure that the children are recognized.
of the board for achieving certified board status, which I believe we were told is less than 10% of the districts in the state. So, and it's all these people that made the dedication of their time to put in the extra hours to get the training. So I thank them all, they're a great team, and very, very glad to be on the board with them and looking out for the best for our students. Okay, we're going to move to board committee reports at this point, and I'd like to start with residency, security, and technology. Commissioner Santiago, could you please read the minutes?
Thank you, President Paris. The Residency, Security, and Technology Committee meeting took place on Monday, June 17, 2024, and began at 5:30 PM. In attendance from administration were Dr. Robertosi, Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shihada, Mr. Doctor, Ms. Zanola, Mr. Mountain. Board of Education members in attendance were myself, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Siano, and President Paris. Additional guests in attendance were Vanessa Gaba and Robert Bertolini from Christopher Columbus Middle School. Mr. Mountain explained that all security referendum-related projects mentioned in previous meetings are continuing as planned. This includes firewalls, internet circuit, internet circuit and router upgrades, and Wi-Fi access point replacements. The new student Chromebook order has been allocated and devices are being prepped off-site. Expected delivery is early August. Commissioners brought up poor cellular service at CHS and other schools. Mr. Mountain will contact providers to investigate options for improving their service in and around our buildings. Commissioners also brought up a concern with Chromebooks accessing board docs, et cetera, during our meetings, these meetings. Future upgrades should alleviate these issues, and a member of the tech team will be on hand at the next BOE meeting to facilitate if needed, and they are here and have been here, so thank you. Mr. Doctor updated the committee on 12 additional students found not living in Clifton due to domicile investigations for a savings of $182,160. This brings the school year-to-date savings of $1,268,242. Mr. Doctor also explained a proposal to hire two part-time staff members to act as attendance agents to assist in reducing chronic absenteeism throughout the district. These staff members would take a preventative, a preventative, a preventive approach to the problem and utilize direct contact with the student and family to resolve issues before poor attendance begins. The committee approved the idea with a 3-0 vote. Finally, Mr. Doctor shared a request by a staff member who utilizes the tuition program for their child to forego tuition in the student's senior year. Discussion occurred, and all of the board members provided their input. Dr. Robertosi will decide the next steps in the matter. Ms. Zanola explained that the district has met all requirements outlined by New Jersey School Drill Law. Clifton Police have attended more of our drills than any other school year. In addition, OSPP has once again reached out to Clifton to host a site for NJ DOE School Safety Training this summer. Clifton Public Schools also apply for two Department of Justice federal grants directly related to stopping violence in schools and responses to security incidents. Ms. Zanola and Ms. Regoza jointly attended the New Jersey School Safety Seminar using behavior threat assessment to prevent targeted school violence sponsored by the U.S. Secret Service. Clifton Public Schools was recognized twice throughout the presentations on both the state and national level for our efforts in the hardening physical security and softening PBSIS of schools. Ms. Zanola mentioned that the district will be hosting the Clifton Police Department Active Shooter Drills over the summer at our school buildings. No students will be present for these drills. In addition, the Junior Police Academy started June 24, and to open the ceremonies, there was a helicopter landing at CHS. Finally, Vice Principal Bertolini pitched a new product to the committee to monitor student migration via digital pass. It was approved for one-year trial to see if there's a benefit to using the product. The meeting adjourned at 7:30. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question. The hotline, are we still using that? And have we had a lot of payouts on the hotline for residency?
I refer to the anonymous tip line?
Yes.
Every year, we're pretty consistent, there are a few every year, so this year, absolutely, we have had a few, whether they're utilizing the hotline or reaching out to Mr. Doctor and his team directly, but we are still paying the bounties for non-resident students.
Thank you.
Commissioner Suarez?
Thank you, this is just for clarification. Can you please let me know what OSPP stands for?
So OSPP is the abbreviation for the New Jersey Department of Education's Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning. They are considered the gurus of school safety and security throughout the state, and our direct source for all the initiatives that we've implemented in our school district come directly from OSPP.
Anyone else, any other questions? Okay, moving on to HSA Booster Club meeting, Commissioner Basford, please.
Thank you. We had our HSA slash Booster Club combined meeting. It happened on June 17 at 6:30, the meeting was opened. We had a lot of people in attendance. Ahmed Shahida opened the meeting, introducing the attendees and their affiliations, including administration, HSA presidents, Booster Club presidents, the Clifton Education Foundation representatives, and Pomtonian. The Board of Education, from the Board of Education president was President Paris, Vice President Dr. Danny, Ms. Suarez, and myself. We had some lengthy discussions, event planning and cost management. We discussed planning the events like trunk of treats and coordinating with Pomtonian for supplies to help reduce the cost to the HSAs. Alex Rosenberg discussed offering catering services and helping booster clubs with the concession stands. Field trip and transportation, this is a big topic with the elementary schools with their field trips. We addressed the elementary time for, limited time for field trips due to bus schedules. Suggestions to extend time by chartering additional buses and shared costs between the Board of Ed and the HSAs. Google directory and communication platform and calendar coordination. Proposal was made for a centralized communication platform for not only the HSAs but also the booster clubs using a Google directory and calendar system. The Clifton School email accounts for the HSAs were suggested as well, and I believe we also suggested that for the booster clubs too, so they could access the calendar. School supplies list, standardizing and making school supply list accessible on the district website was discussed with updates to be posted by the end of the school year. Website updates are submitted to building principals and approval to sent to Jay Horn and Samantha DeRosa for the website. Booster club concerns, discussion regarding booster club handling of the concession at the stadium. Recognition of contribution, Loretta Ahmed discussed the Clifton Education Foundation support for teachers and HSA initiatives through grants and fundraising events. Our meeting adjourned at 7:30. Mostly every school was listed, I'm not going to say who was there from each school, but mostly every HSA principals and/or administration was there representing their schools. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Basford. Commissioner Brunciak, would you please read the Facilities Committee meetings?
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Facilities Committee meeting occurred on July 1, 2024. Those present were myself, Commissioner Siano, Commissioner Canova, Dr. Robertosi, Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shihada, Mr. Maldonado, Mr. Marchionne, Mr. Oviedo, and Mr. Watkins. Meeting started at 3:30, adjourned at 3:52. Items of discussion were the referendum update. Epic gave an overview of what has taken place thus far in the referendum and what is taking place throughout the rest of the year. Package 2 and 2A are complete. Working on the bathrooms and security vestibules in other buildings, expected to be done January 2025 for Package 4. Package 3, spring of 2025. CHS Package 1, winter 2024. Still waiting on electrical parts, that are delayed. Number 2 was the plaque. Mr. Shihada emailed the entire board with renditions and the pricing details for both plaques. Each plaque is set to cost $5,600, bringing the total to $11,200 for both. This price was a result of negotiations with Mr. Shihada ensuring that the quality integrity of the plaques were not compromised despite the cost of reduction. The board reviewed the renditions and expressed satisfaction with the design and pricing, noting that the negotiated price reflects a balance between cost effectiveness and maintaining high standards. B&amp;G Updates, the blacktop and the pothole repairs. The City of Clifton, City of Clifton DPW will commence blacktop and potholes, pothole repairs in mid-July. This project aims to address the deteriorating conditions of the roads and improve safety for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. The DPW will prioritize the areas with most significant damage and will work in coordination with local schools to minimize disruptions during the repair period. Woodrow Wilson Middle School Library/Media Center renovation. The renovation of Woodrow Wilson Middle School Library/Media Center is scheduled to take place over the summer. The project will involve installing a new drop ceiling, upgrading the lighting to energy-efficient fixtures, replacing the flooring with durable, modern materials, and providing new ergonomic furniture. These improvements are designed to create a more inviting and functional space for students and staff. The target completion date is set for the beginning of September in time for the new school year. Gutter guards installation, gutter guards have been successfully installed at School 3 and School 5. These guards are intended to prevent leaves and debris from clogging the gutters, reducing maintenance needs, and preventing water damage to the buildings. The installation was completed on schedule, and initial feedback from maintenance staff has been positive regarding the effectiveness of the guards. Parking plans for School Number 11. Parking plans for School Number 11 have been awarded to contractor DNR with Rodney seen overseeing the scheduling and execution of the project. The new parking layout will include additional spaces to accommodate staff and visitors, improve traffic flow, and enhance safety features such as better lighting and clear signage. The timeline for the project's start and completion will be communicated once the scheduling is finalized. Boiler replacement at School 17, one of the boilers at School 17 will be replaced with a new Ercow Platinum Boiler. This replacement is necessary to ensure reliable heating and improve energy efficiency. This replacement is necessary to ensure reliable heating and improve energy efficiency within the school. The new boiler has a lead time of approximately four weeks for delivery. Installation will be in schedule, will be scheduled immediately upon arrival to minimize any disruption to school operations. Custodial maintenance and maintenance team job opportunities, interviews for job opportunities within the custodial and maintenance team will begin this week. The positions available include both full-time and part-time roles with responsibilities ranging from routine cleaning and maintenance to specialized tasks requiring technical skills. The hiring process aims to fill these positions promptly to support the ongoing maintenance and operational needs of the school facilities. Use of facilities. The committee engaged in a comprehensive discussion regarding the use of facilities over the summer. Key topics included the status of pending permits, the feasibility of accommodating various activities, and the potential of impact on scheduled summer athletic programs. Committee members expressed concerns about ensuring all the necessary permits are obtained in a timely manner to avoid any disruptions. They also explored how to best coordinate the use of facilities to balance the needs of the athletic programs with other community and school events. Additionally, there was an emphasis placed on maintaining safety and accessibility standards while maximizing the utilization of available spaces. Little Free Pantry. The committee discussed the proposal presented by Doc, presented to Dr. Robert Tozzi by a community member to install little free pantries on school grounds. These pantries would provide students the opportunity to assist their classmates by collecting food donations. Additionally, local community members would be encouraged to contribute to the pantries. The committee wanted to further discuss this at a later date. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a comment, and that's concerning the help we're getting from the City of Clifton. Just an example of some shared services that is saving, saving us some money and utilizing our capabilities with the city, so we thank the city for their cooperation and assistance in this pothole repair that they have the manpower and the equipment to help with, so it's deeply appreciated by the board. Any other questions? Okay. Commissioner Brunsack, you're up again. Finance minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Those in attendance were myself, Commissioner Santiago, Commissioner Mahia, Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shahada, and Mr. Uchi. Meeting started at 5:00 PM. Meeting ended at 5:20 PM. Items of discussion was trip coverage. During the HSA Booster Club meeting, concerns were raised about busing issues. District buses often need to return early to transport students home, causing disruptions. To address this, the Finance Committee is exploring the option of hiring outside bus services for field trips that require long-distance travel. This solution aims to ensure timely and efficient transportation for students while minimizing the impact on regular bus schedules. This will be examined on a case-by-case basis determined by administration. The other thing was a referendum plaque, which is essentially what we described in the Facilities Minutes. Almost verbatim. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Brunsack. I'll do the next one, since it's a special ad hoc committee. It's called the Naming Committee. We had a meeting on July 11th. In attendance were Commissioner Santiago, Commissioner Bassford, myself, a student, a high school student, Vice Principal Mr. Chris Keegan, a faculty member of CHS, Ms. Ibrahim, and Mr. Malahi, our athletic director in an advisory role. In attendance from administration was Mr. Shahada. The discussion was a request we received to consider naming the track at the stadium after our current track coach, Mr. Pontes. The discussion, the committee met to discuss the proposal to name the track at Christopher Columbus Middle School after Coach John Pontes. The committee reviewed Coach Pontes' significant contributions to the school and the community. The community, the committee members expressed their support for the proposal, noting the positive impact of Coach Pontes on students. A decision was made. Commissioner Bassford made a motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Santiago to move the item from committee. The committee voted with a majority in favor of the proposal, contingent on the vetting of the accolades and record listed in Coach Pontes' resume. Our next steps, the committee will prepare the necessary documentation, which is a letter from myself to the superintendent and the board secretary for review. That has been done, and if the superintendent agrees with our recommendation, he will forward it to the full board here for input, discussion, and final approval. Any questions? Okay, thank you. And lastly, our Policy Committee met. Commissioner Suarez, please, could you read the minutes?
Thank you, President Paris. The Policy Met, Policy Committee met on July 17th. Present was myself, Commissioner Mahia, Commissioner Canova, and President Paris. The administrators who attended were Mr. Shahada and Ms. Maggie Miller. The meeting started at 4:00 PM and ended at 4:39 PM. Items of discussion. Use of school facilities. Mr. Shahada drafted an addendum to the current policy in place to ensure the district is covered. This addendum addresses the following areas. Political advertisements. Use of school facilities for political advertisements or activities is strictly prohibited. Safety compliance. Users must follow district safety protocols. Failure to comply can result in event termination and denial of future use. Damage and cleanup. Users are responsible for damage and cleanup. A security deposit may be required and refunded after inspection. Noise and disturbance. Noise levels must comply with district policy. Disturbances can result in event termination. Event approval and monitoring. The district may monitor events for compliance, and onsite representatives' cost will be borne by the user. Revocation of permission. The district can revoke facility use permission if policies are violated or if facilities are needed for school purposes. Sponsors will be disclosed during the application process. A sponsor is defined in the policy. Number item 2, facility naming policy. Mr. Shahada drafted an addendum to the current policy in place. This addendum addresses the following areas. Personnel matters. Personnel matters of those under consideration will be discussed after the student representatives leave the meeting. The board reserves the right to remove any individual who commits an infraction deemed by the board to be of poor or moral standing. Item 3, PTO policy. The administration received a policy from a neighboring district that details the collaboration between a school district and the local parent-teacher organization. This policy outlines strict protocols and procedures for effective partnership. The committee will continue to discuss and review this policy to determine its applicability and potential implementation within our district. In addition, a majority of the sample policy is already in place. Item number 4, Student Dress Code K-12 update. Mr. Jengaro is actively collaborating with various stakeholders and is diligently working to gather insights and best practices. He is currently in the process of organizing meetings with representatives from other school districts to explore and understand successful strategies and initiatives that have been effective in enhancing education for lower-level grades. This comprehensive approach aims to identify and implement proven methods to improve the learning experience and outcomes for our younger students. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question regarding use of facility. I would like to make a recommendation that, or a suggestion, that when we take, when we take an application, because I remember doing this years ago, and we had to show proof of our 501(c)(3) status on the application actually being submitted. Are you guys doing that now?
We are working out a method where the PTOs specifically are going to have to prove to us that, you know, once a year, they're going to have to submit their documentation to us, showing that they're still in compliance with whatever the 501(c)(3) guidelines are.
Okay, because it's actually under the code 501(a), the IRS code. Anybody that is a officer in an organization can request a document that actually shows their status and print it out on their computer. You and I, if we, all of us, if we weren't an officer in that business, we could not request that, but the actual officers on, that are listed under the guidelines of the 501(c)(a) code would be able to supply that. My recommendation is to have that supplied with the documentation, because it takes the burden off of you guys for actually doing, because you can find it with a very simple search, there's a couple places, even on iBot, you can ask them if an organization is a 501(c)(3) or 4, or whatever it is under the 501(a) code, it'll come up like that. But you want that document from the IRS, because if you have people that are using our facilities and they get a waived fee, it's fair. But I don't think it's fair that we're waiving fees for people that aren't actually a 501(c), certified by the IRS code. Also, that gives us the opportunity to know that donations are going to them, can be written off by people that actually donate to them. So, you know, because if you donate to an organization and they're not really certified or under the list of 501, the A code, you can't write that off on your taxes. So that was my concern, and my concern is about garnering, garnering revenue for the district. Like, you know, I can come up to you and say I'm a 501(c)(3). How do you know, unless we're given that thing? So that was my concern.
Specifically for the PTOs, once a year, they're going to have to submit it to us, because once you get it, you're kind of in compliance for the year. So we're going to be drafting something, Maggie and I, this is when we discussed. So the new form is in circulation currently, has nothing to do with that, but for any other organization that is not a PTO, they're going to have to submit it on, you know, on demand.
Right, because we, we do have a vendor that we, we partner with to do for the wrestling, and it's great, but like, I've, I've been on this board for 13 years, I'm still trying to find out what the wrestling team gets from that organization, and I know you have the information, that's another thing for another day for another committee, but I just, any less burden for your office after all the debacles that we've been going through will help you out. It just takes a search, and, but that organization should be able to prove the burden on them. That, it's got to be their role. It's got to be their role.
So, like I said, we will have a letter going out. Maggie and I are working on it. I'm going to send out all the HSA, whoever I can get in contact from the HSAs, I'll send it to principals so they can forward it as well, they have better contact information, and the board will see a copy of the letter as well.
And one other thing, I spoke to Danny in length on this whole subject, on the HSA Booster Club meetings, because we're going to try to break free and let the HSA have their own time and the Booster Club have their own time. For the, for the Booster, the HSAs that need help, we were going to try to petition to the older, more established HSAs to give them a hand. And like, if anybody from, or the administration can help them, steer them in the right direction on what they have to do, because a lot of times, we get a rollover all the time of brand-new parents on those HSAs that don't know what they need to do. So that was one of the suggestions I came up with Danny, but, you know, so when we meet Mark, I guess, talk about it, all right? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Question, Commissioner Santiago. So on the PTO, so you're saying, Mr. Shahada, that you guys are working on something to ask the PTOs. I just want to understand why. We're asking them, if you're, to prove that you are 501(c)(3), is that what we are asking them?
Correct. So, past practice by the board is that we do not collect a fee for the use of facilities for nonprofits.
Got you.
You know, we're under the impression that all HSAs, PTOs, PTAs, whatever they want to be called nowadays, are nonprofits. We've had some debacles, as Ms. Bassford said, so we're going to try to streamline the process and ensure that everybody is, and if they're not, you know, Maggie, Ms. Miller will be drafting a letter, that if we do not get this, you're going to be charged the fee. You can still use the building, but whatever the cost is for that facility that you're renting will be, you will be charged for it.
Correct, great. So it's because we are waiving a fee, and you will prove that you are 501(c)(3), and we will waive it.
Correct.
But if you're not, you're going to get charged a fee.
Correct.
But you're still using the facility. We are not declining your usage of the facility.
No, absolutely not.
So this is all, so whether you're 501(c)(3) or not, you still are going to use it potentially so long as you're within our policy.
Within the guidelines of our policy.
It's just that we're not going to charge you for it.
Exactly.
Right? Great. Do we have any idea how many of our HSAs, PTOs are, you don't have to know, but I would assume most of them are not a 501(c)(3) potentially, or do we know?
I would say a good majority, 80%, I would bet good money on that, that they are in compliance and are 501(c)(3)'s that are currently active.
Okay, so either they're going to go take on the burden of becoming a 501(c)(3) if they want the fee waived, but I'm just thinking, like, we're going to now potentially, those that are not 501(c)(3)'s, which maybe you're seeing that number, they're either going to go out there or they're not going to do it, and they're just going to pay the fee and still use the facility.
So there is nothing in our policy that specifically outlines that nonprofits are exempt from a fee. I can make the recommendation to the board, to the Facilities Committee on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, it's much easier if they just are 501(c)(3), so I can kind of just skip all that and just put it on the agenda, but, you know, the board is very generous and accommodating, so I'm pretty sure if I do make that request on a, you know, on a semi-regular basis, you guys would comply with that request.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we have no requirement that the PTO must be a 501(c)(3).
No.
We're just doing this because of waiving a fee or not.
The generosity of.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Mahia.
I was going to say, I agree with Ms. Bassford, what she mentioned before. When I was working in the university setting, we were a nonprofit, in order to attend some college fairs, we would have to submit that we are a 501(c)(3), as well as our insurance and all that. That way, we wouldn't have to pay the extra tax on it. So I think it's a great idea, not just PTOs in general. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Brunsack.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. If they, if they, if they are not a 501(c)(3), you know, if there's somebody who would be willing, you know, to assist them with, with getting that certification or whatever, I don't know what it costs to, to do that.
It's 75 for the state of New Jersey. The IRS, it's free.
Yeah, I can, I'm sure they would reach out if they don't have knowledge on how to go about that, right? I'd connect them with Ms. Bassford, I'd connect them with another HSA president who's in compliance with the 501(c)(3) guidelines.
Thank you.
Mr. Paris, the reason why I brought this up is because it's just like special education versus general education. What you offer one, you have to offer the other. If we're offering these waived fees for certain individuals and we're assuming that everybody's compliant, if we had a company, say, Mr. Brunsack was a, a company came in and he says, I'm nonprofit, and he's really not, and somebody else got wind that we did that, we could probably be putting ourselves at liability, we're just trying to clean out, we're trying to clean up our books and make everything fair. That's what, that was my role with this from the very beginning when I brought it up to people, but there's, on the HSA committee, there's a really group of really nice, a great group of dedicated people, and they have been reaching out. From, Ms. Patrick developed this Google Calendar and this shared, they have an actual entity where they talk to each other, like a chat. They've been helping each other out, and it's been very, very collaborative and very therapeutic. I mean, they're really helping each other out. So I'm sure if, like, we got on one of our HSA meetings and we said, you know, somebody raised their hand, I need help, they will all jump in, and they'll show them what to do. So it's, it's a really group, a good group of people, but the problem is the rollover. When you get a new group in, the old group doesn't, the new group doesn't know what the old group did, and that's the problem.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Again, we're going a little bit out of order here, but Assistant Superintendent Jengaro will make some comments before we move on to some voting.
Thank you, President Paris. For this month's Superintendent's Report, we'd like to start with an update on the summer enrichment and academic programs. I'd like to say that Clifton schools are bustling with activity and creativity, especially highlighted by the IC program, summer, IC summer program held at School 3 this year. Just this morning, at the newly renovated School 3 auditorium, our students delivered an outstanding performance to the musical Finding Nemo, showcasing their talents with grace and enthusiasm. From the band to the string to the ukulele ensembles, their dedication and skills were truly impressive. Each summer, it's remarkable to witness the incredible achievements of our students and staff in such a brief period of time, and this year was no exception. So in the spirit of show business, heartfelt bravo goes out to all that contributed to today's performance and this year's program. At our elementary schools, including School 17, School 4, and the 12 annex, we're currently offering programs such as Jump Start Program for rising kindergarteners, Title 1 enrichment programs for ELA, math, and STEM, and Title 3 ESL classes. This August, School 17 will also be hosting a writing camp for middle-school age students. This summer at Clifton High School, the summer programs include a middle-school academic academy and Title 3 ESL support for grades 6 through 12. Project Adolante, a college readiness and dual enrollment program for Spanish-speaking ELL students, occurs daily at Kame University and will actually be continuing throughout the course of the school year. Our special education students are supported through the Extended School Year, or ESY program, at Schools 16 and Cela B, and we actually provide our students with virtual options that include a student-accelerated academic summer support and high-intensity tutoring for grades 3 through 5, a credit recovery program for students in grades 6 through 12 in partnership with the Northern Region Educational Services Commission. At an upcoming board meeting facilitated by Janina Kusalevich, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, we will have the opportunity to experience present of Curriculum Instruction, we will have the opportunity to experience presentations that highlight a range of these programs showcasing the impressive learning and enjoyment of our students over the summer. Moving on to athletics and the marching band, starting with athletics, our summer season and session is in full swing. Coaches have been running our camps, clinics, competing in leagues. They've also been utilizing our new stadium weight room for strength and conditioning sessions. We are about to come into what's called a no-contact period, known as the blackout period. It's scheduled from August 3rd to August 11th, and during this time, no athletic activities are to take place. What this does, it provides both our student athletes and our coaches with a well-deserved time off during the summer. But immediately following the blackout period, simply put, it's game on. Our football and girls tennis team will begin on August 12th, and our cross-country gymnastics, boys and girls soccer teams, and girls volleyball teams will start competing and practicing on August 19th. What we're most excited about with athletics is we wanted to share the fact that over 500 physicals were processed this summer, just reflecting the strong interest and importance of athletics here in our One Clifton community. Moving on to the marching band, we'd like to say the members of the show band of the Northeast are looking forward to getting started with band camp kicking off on Monday, August 19th. In addition to performing at football games, this upcoming season highlights will include performing at the Athenia Business Association Street Fair on Sunday, September 15th, participating in the Clifton Halloween Parade on Sunday, October 27th, the North Jersey Band Festival at Clifton Stadium, also on Sunday, October 27th, West Milford Tattoo on Saturday, November 19th, the Clifton Veterans Day Parade on Sunday, November 10th, and a performance Under the Lights on Wednesday, November 27th. We look forward to the upcoming season and wish Director Stepneski and the marching band, as well as all the coaches and student athletes, the best of luck this season, and we will definitely all be there to support you. Speaking about sports and a little bit of world news, one of my own personal favorite topics, tomorrow is the start of the 2024 Summer Olympic Games hosted in Paris, right? Here, close to 11,000 athletes representing 206 countries compete in 329 events and 32 sports over a 19-day period. What I found to be somewhat entertaining this year is the fact that opening ceremonies do take place on the 26th, featuring a torchbearer who epitomizes the spirit of athletic competition and instantly brings to mind the excitement of the Olympics. It's the one, the only Snoop Dogg. I just found that to be interesting for the Summer Olympics and wanted to share that fun fact with our committee. But I do encourage everybody to take some time to watch this incredible athletic spectacle and truthfully take the time to share the joy as these world-class athletes stand on the podium, get the medals presented to them that they've worked so incredibly hard for, and then above all else, listen to their national anthems played for all of the year. And finally, and I'm saving the best for last, I'm pleased to share some exciting news with our community. On July 16th, in a private and dignified ceremony, Mr. Ahmed Shahada, our esteemed Assistant Superintendent of Business, was officially appointed to the State Board of Education. Ahmed secured what is referred to as a senatorial courtesy, where senators in his county had to endorse his nomination before it actually proceeds to the Judiciary Committee. On June 28th, he interviewed and testified before the Senate Judiciary Committee and was confirmed by the State Senate later that day. Typically, a process like this can take months or even a full year. This was an extremely accelerated process and highlights the ties that he has in Trenton. Ahmed is not only the youngest current member of the State Board of Education, but also is the youngest to ever serve in this capacity. We are immensely proud of this significant milestone in his career and are grateful to have a representative from Clifton serving in Trenton. This prestigious appointment is a testament to Ahmed's exceptional dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to advancing educational standards within the state. As a member of the State Board of Education, Ahmed will play a crucial role in shaping policies and initiatives that will impact schools and students, most importantly, across New Jersey. So please join me in congratulating Ahmed in this remarkable achievement. We are confident that your leadership and your vision will contribute significantly to the future of education in our state. And that concludes this month's superintendent's report.
In the tradition I seem to start this meeting with, we're going to, again, jump a little bit around. We're going to vote next on personnel, the items under personnel, that's under B. The items are numbered 1 through 45. So I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Brunsack.
Second.
By Commissioner Suarez. Mr. Shahada, roll call. Oh, discussion, anyone? Sorry. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes, I abstain on P. 38 and P. 39, my name only.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes, except P. 38 abstaining on my name only.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes, abstaining on P. 38, my name only.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes, abstaining on P. 38, 9, 39.
Ms. Siano?
Yes, abstaining on P. 38, P. 39, my name only.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes, abstaining on P. 38 and P. 39, my name and Ahmed Shahada.
Vice President Danny?
Yes, abstaining on P. 38 and P. 39, my name only.
President Paris?
Yes, abstaining on 38 and my name only on 38 and 39.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations to our current, our new interim superintendent, Mr. Mark Jengaro. That's one of the, that's why we changed the voting order here a bit. We wanted Mr. Jengaro to get right into his role. We're very fortunate that in Dr. Robertozzi's absence, we have such a competent assistant superintendent that can jump in and continue the great work that administration and this board does. And I'd like to turn it over to you for some comments at this point.
Thank you, President Paris and the Board of Education. I'm going to keep the first part of this brief, as the focus following the recent passing of personnel really should not be on me. But I do need to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to Dr. Robertozzi for recommending me, and of course, our Board of Education Commissioners for approving my role as acting superintendent in his absence. Additionally, I extend my heartfelt thanks to the entire One Clifton learning community for their trust, their support, and confidence in me. I am honored to temporarily step into this vital role and serve our district to the best of my ability. I'd also like to thank everyone who has reached out to extend their congratulations and well wishes. Your support has been greatly appreciated in this time. But the best part of all of this has been that common theme echoed throughout all of these communications in that, quote, "We are here to support you in whatever you need." And that just truly, that type of support truly embodies our mantra of One Clifton. But really, where the focus for tonight should be right now is on the individuals who were just appointed as an acting principal, assistant principals, and administrative interns. And they've put in the grind to achieve their goals in obtaining these administrative positions. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize and congratulate Megan Fitzpatrick, Karina Vega, Andrew Rosado, Nicole Perchala, Anthony Luzzi, and Courtney Spicini on their appointments to assistant principal and administrative intern, as well as Mr. Tarris Patrician, who has been appointed to the acting principal role at School 15. 14, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dr. Batten Walker. I saw the glare from the back. But I'd like to also highlight is that all seven of these newly appointed team members have been what we affectionately refer to as cadets in our Administrators Academy, and they've been cadets for the past two years, one of which continued to attend those academy trainings even while being out during maternity leave. For those of you who don't know, the Administrators Academy is our in-house training and professional development opportunity for our current and aspiring administrators. This platform provides participants with the essential knowledge and skills about policies, laws, procedures necessary to serve in administrative roles. Through the academy, cadets gain insight to the inner workings of the district as well as information specific to state and federal mandates. I'm even further pleased to announce that over the past two years, 11 out of the 13 administrative positions, including acting principals, assistant principals, supervisors, and admin interns, have been filled by academy cadets, with an additional two cadets earning administrative positions in other districts. Specific to the success of this initiative, simply put, I'd say the proof is in the pudding. We would like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Robertozzi for their support of Admin Academy, as well as all the presenters who generously share their knowledge and expertise with the cadets. But what we have here with us this evening are three of the four newly appointed assistant principals, Ms. Megan Fitzpatrick, who will be assigned to School 14, Ms. Karina Vega, who will be assigned to School 12, Ms. Nicole Perchala, who will be assigned to the Seela B building, and Mr. Tarris Patrician, again, who will be appointed to the acting principal at School 14. Mr. Rosado, who will be assigned to School Number 13, will speak at next month's meeting as he's currently on a family vacation at Disney. What we thought would have been fun for him to call in remotely from Star Wars Galaxy Edge in Hollywood Studios, preferably with the Millennium Falcon in the background, we decided to give him the night off to enjoy some family time. So again, to our seven new administrative team members, congratulations, we are so very proud of you. And at this time, I'd like to invite any of you to come up and say a few words to the Board of Education.
Good evening, Mr. Jengaro, President Paris, Vice President Dr. Danny, and Commissioners. I am deeply honored and humbled to accept the position of interim assistant principal of Seela B. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the board and the administration for this incredible opportunity. Your trust and confidence in me mean the world. Clifton has been my professional home for the past 21 years, and I am incredibly thankful for the opportunities it has afforded me. I have had the privilege of teaching BSI as well as first, second, and third grade, and for the past five years, serving as an elementary language arts literacy coach. Each role has enriched my career and allowed me to grow as an educator. I am also profoundly grateful for my unwavering support of my family. My husband and I are both graduates of Clifton High School, class of 1998 and 1999, and it's a joy to see our children following in our footsteps, with our oldest, Jacob, set to graduate in 2028, our middle child, Patrick, in 2029, and our youngest, Nicholas, in the class of 2036. A special thank you to my supervisor for the past five years, Dr. Kropenak, for your guidance and mentorship. Your support has been instrumental in my journey, and I will be forever thankful for you. To the literacy team, aka the literacy buzz, working with all of you has been an absolute pleasure. Your dedication, passion, and teamwork have made a significant impact on our students' literacy development, and I am beyond grateful for each of you. Thank you to my building principal, Mrs. Zorsky. Your guidance and support throughout the years have been invaluable. I would also like to take the moment to congratulate Mr. Shahada on his appointment to the State Board of Education. This is a tremendous achievement, and we are all proud to have you representing our community at the state level. I would like to extend my prayers and well wishes to Dr. Robertozzi on a speedy recovery. I am excited to embark on the new chapter and look forward to working together to continue fostering a nurturing and dynamic learning environment for our students. Thank you, everyone, again, and have a wonderful night.
Good evening, all. I wanted to extend my sincerest gratitude to the board president, Mr. Alan Paris, vice president, Dr. Lucy Danny, the board commissioners, superintendent of schools, Dr. Robertozzi, and assistant superintendents, Mr. Jengaro, Ms. Janina Kusilevich, and Mr. Shahada for appointing me as the assistant principal for School 12. Through the program of Admin Academy, I had the opportunity to be the administrative intern at School 12 this year. I'm pleased to continue my journey as an administrator alongside my admin team, Mrs. Kenning and Ms. Ray. As I step into this role, I am filled with enthusiasm and a strong commitment to fostering an environment where both students and teachers can thrive. Education has always been my passion, and I'm excited to collaborate with our dedicated team of administrators, staff, parents, and community to support our students' growth and success. A very special thank you to my parents, my husband, and my kids, or my Vega Circus, as I like to call them, for being my main line of support. Thank you to my mentor, Dr. Batten Walker, principal of School 15, for continuously providing authentic support, guidance, and feedback throughout my time at School 15 and beyond. I may not be a Clifton resident, but Clifton has truly become my second home. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you to achieve our shared goals and make meaningful impacts on the lives of our students and school community. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Paris, Vice President Danny, board commissioners, Dr. Robertozzi, Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shahada, Ms. Kusilevich, central administration, and my Clifton colleagues for this distinguished opportunity to serve as the assistant principal of School 14. 20 years ago, I was a senior at Clifton High. I'm a Clifton girl, born and raised, and while that year was the last year I officially wore my Clifton cheerleading uniform, I found that during my last 14 years here in the district, I still remain one of the biggest Mustang cheerleaders, rooting for my students, our colleagues, and our district through my journey here in Clifton. During my 12 years working as a self-contained teacher at School 9, and my time at Woodrow Wilson Middle School as an in-class support teacher and a special Olympics coach, it has been my greatest passion to continue promoting academic, emotional, and social successes for our special needs population. This last year, I was afforded the opportunity to serve as the administrative intern at School 1 through that experience as well as Admin Academy. I am eager to enter this next phase of my career at School 14 and to have the opportunity to support our students and staff in a new capacity, as well as working out with Mr. Patrician. I'd like to extend my deepest gratitude to my many mentors through the years who have guided me through my journey to administration, Mr. Orlando, Mrs. Rosetti, Mr. Jaeger, Mr. Mencken, Mrs. Bertolo, Mrs. Romeo, our fabulous central administration, and my supervisors at the Special Services Department. Thank you to my family, especially my parents, my brothers and sister-in-laws, my grandma who's watching at home, hi Grandma, and who've supported me and encouraged my dream for becoming a teacher since I was five years old. Growing up, school was always a place I felt cared for and supported, in large part because of the leadership of my principal and my teachers that I admired since walking into kindergarten and leaving them in the dust as I began my educational career. I continue to have that dedicated passion to be that person and have that lasting impact not only now in the School 14 community, but as our Clifton community as a whole. So thank you again for this opportunity. I am so eager to get started and continue my journey here in Clifton, my home since I was born. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm honored to serve as an acting principal of School 14, and thank you for entrusting me in this leadership role. It's going to be my sixth or seventh year at School 14, and it's all under Jason Haber and his leadership. I want to thank him for his guidance and support and for building the values that are there at School 14. It's big shoes to fill. I'm confident I'll do well. I'm going to wish him continued success in his next building. But I'm really here for our new vice principal, Maggie. I heard very nice things about her, and I'm here on behalf of School 14 to welcome her to our new home. Thank you.
Well, congratulations and thank you all. Okay. Let me get ourselves back on track here. Get myself back on track. We're going to adopt the minutes from our last meeting of June 13th, 2024. Motion to adopt.
Motion.
Second.
By Commissioner Bassford, second by Commissioner Siano. Roll call, Mr. Shahada, please.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Danny?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to hold my comments till the end. Any unfinished business at this point that we need to discuss? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner Bassford, could you please read our expression of condolence?
Thank you, President Paris. Just let me get, there you go. Whereas on July 20th, 2024, the community noted with sorrow the passing of Lorraine Hall, and whereas Ms. Hall had served the Clifton Board of Education and the children of Clifton faithfully and conscientiously for 35 years. Ms. Hall was a kindergarten teacher at School 5, 3rd and 5th grades at School 4, and 5th grade at School 8 before retiring. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this resolution be forwarded to her bereaved family to serve as an in- 5, 3rd and 5th grades at School 4, and 5th grade at School 8 before retiring. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution be forwarded to her bereaved family to serve as an expression of the great regard in which Ms. Hall was held by the Board of Education, the administration employees, and the pupils of the Clifton Public Schools, and be it further resolved that the contents of this resolution be noted in their entirety in the official minutes of the Clifton Board of Education for future generations to peruse, dated July 25. Also, I just want a side note. It was very nice to see in her obituary that they asked for donations to a different organization, and then the other donation was to give to the Clifton Board of Education for therapy dogs. So thank you very much for your generosity in thinking about a program that helps our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bassford. We'll be moving on to our public recognition part of our meeting. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested to sign the register provided for this purpose and to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by the members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. In addition, the Clifton Board of Education wishes to congratulate Mr. Shahada on his recent appointment to the New Jersey State Board of Education. Since becoming a member of the State Board, Mr. Shahada has received a number of phone calls and inquiries regarding State Board business or matters that may be before it. While we are pleased to have Mr. Shahada serve in this important role, it is necessary that during regular business hours, he devote his time and attention to Clifton Board matters. Some of you may wish to direct comments and questions to Mr. Shahada during this public comment portion of our meeting. Please be reminded that we are here to address Clifton Board of Education matters. While you are free to comment on State Board of Education matters, please be reminded that all comments must be directed to me as the Chair. Furthermore, please understand that Mr. Shahada is not trying to be rude or evasive. However, he will not respond to any such comments or questions as his participation in this meeting is as the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Board Secretary for the Clifton Public School District. We appreciate your understanding. Is there anyone who would like to, anyone virtually?
No one virtually.
Motion to close?
Motion to close. Commissioner Mejia, second by Commissioner Santiago. Anyone here like to make any comments this evening?
Well, good evening. I'm Lori LaLaman. I'm the president of the CEA. First of all, I want to extend our congratulations to Ahmed Shahada for a fantastic placement. I heard a while ago that this would be happening, so I'm very proud of you. You'll do wonders for the kids for the state of New Jersey, and that's the most important thing. So, the other thing, there's a couple of things. So Pride and Fast Grants are now open for all the teachers and powers that are listening. So please make sure you contact Martha Arrock at School 12, because we have $70,000 to spend. So please make sure you contact her, set up specific ideas for your grants. The next thing is, as you know, Clifton is involved in the Labor Management Collaboration. So through NJEA and NEA, we were invited to California the end of June. So I got a beautiful letter from the California Labor Institute. So it says, Dear Lori and team, we wanted to extend our heartfelt thanks to you and your team for attending the 2024 California Labor Management Initiative Summer Institute. Your presence and active participation were crucial in making this event a resounding success. We are immensely proud of the dedication and enthusiasm your team demonstrated throughout the institute. Your commitment to fostering collaborative relationships and improving educational outcomes is truly inspiring. So we're going to take this on the road, I'm just letting you know, because we are a force to be reckoned with when it comes to labor management collaboration. So I want to thank the Board for allowing the administrators to attend. So it was Martha Andrea Rock, Dr. Danny Robertozzi, Rachel Capizzi, Laura Zagorsky, Ahmad Hamda, and Michael Texa, and myself. So I want to thank you again for letting us attend, as well as Janina Kusilovich, sorry, Janina. All right. So we had a great time. We brought our information to California, and we're farther ahead than California is, and they've been doing this for 10 years. So we have a great Board, we have great administrators, we have great teachers, paraprofessionals, that are all involved in this. So I can't thank everybody enough for all of their ideas and solutions to so many issues. So thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one, motion to close?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brunsack?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Suarez. Next up is Finance and Facilities, Section C. Looking for a motion to approve Items 1 through 26.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Shahada.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mejia. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes and no to F-10. Yes and no on F-10.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes, abstaining on F-2009935 Tomahawk Promotions because of my business relationship.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Danny?
Yes, no to F-10.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is Education Administration, Section D, Items 1 through 26. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bassford.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brunsack. Any discussion? Mr. Shahada, roll call, please.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes, everything except EA-18, no on EA-18.
Mr. Mejia?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Suarez?
Yes.
Vice President Danny?
Yes.
President Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Board member comments are next, and if my record-keeping is correct, Commissioner Bassford will be first up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for everyone that came out tonight. It was so, it was great to see everybody here to honor their family member for their academic, I mean, for their promotions. It's really good to see some of our Clifton students from, knowing them from when they were little children, to blossom into such a great employee and dedicated to our children. And I've seen her work on our HSA Committee and just recently doing stuff for the HSA Booster Club Committee. I was really, really just happy to see that. I attended the ISEE program today to see the string, the band, and the play, Finding Nemo. It was just extraordinary. The talent that we have in this district is amazing, and it was nice to be in a cool, redone auditorium. Very proud of seeing the fruit of the labor for the referendum. Condolences to Ms. Schnepp and her family on the loss of her mother, as I've come to know her from my children having her in high school, but more so with the stories she shares at the Academic Awards Dinner of her mother. I felt like I know the woman firsthand, and I'm very sorry about your loss. To the whole family, especially the Shackle family, on the loss of your loved one, my deepest condolences. I'd like to congratulate the Board of Education on the award, the dual award from the State and the General Assembly on that resolution. Never in the 13 years that I've sit in these chairs, because I've moved around a lot alphabetically, that I would ever think that the Board becomes certified. So to me, that is such a moving, monumental accomplishment. Thank you to Dr. Rosie Bagoli for honoring me in that way. When I met you, I never knew that our paths would intertwine for the advancement of public education, especially with the special education world. Last but not least, that was some disclaimer. Awesome, and I appreciate everything you do. I mostly appreciate the fact that you are going to be shaping the administrative code for the state of New Jersey, Chapter 14, but mostly Chapter 14, 6A, which is where my passion lies. I look forward to great things from you. I know you will bring them. Your communication since you've been sitting in that role has really blown me out of the water. You answer me, we argue at times, we get a little testy with each other, but at the end of the day, I am so confident that your role here and then down there, you'll know how to separate them. For that disclaimer, I appreciate whoever worked on that in collaboration with you guys, and I hope that our community understands that when you're here, you're here, and you know how to divide that hat, and I'm confident that you will divide it. But I am so thrilled that Chapter 14, 6A, will be in your hands, and I will be bothering you every day when I see something that I need to point you to your attention to. So congratulations, and service all well in the state of New Jersey. We are so grateful that we have a voice now at the real table. Thank you. Good night.
Commissioner Brunsack?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off with a prayer for Dr. Robertozzi. Oh Lord, we surrender ourselves to you and ask for help. We cannot guide Dr. Robertozzi any further. You are with him post-surgery today. You're our Creator, and you've breathed life into us. Please grant Dr. Robertozzi a successful recovery so that he may make a fuller recovery and to continue to glorify you. Bless the hands of the doctors, nurses, and their work today, and please help them heal Dr. Robertozzi. Amen. And I want to express my sincere congrats to Mr. Shahada on being appointed to the State Board of Education. This young man just recently joined our administration as an Assistant BA, and in short period of time is now Assistant Superintendent of Business. If Dr. Robertozzi did not believe in Mr. Shahada's skillset and vision for our district, I promise you, he would not be here today. This is a man of integrity and a high caliber, high-quality human being. I urge everyone who may be concerned of his appointment that they reserve their judgment until they see his voting record. If there's anyone who knows the pulse of our district the most, among them is Mr. Shahada. I believe he will be voting in favor of what is best for the students and Clifton Public Schools. Congrats again, Mr. Shahada. Also, thank you to the generous anonymous donation to the School 12 HSA, over $18,000 donation to School 12 HSA, and that is a tough, tough school, and just all the generosity that people have for this district, can't thank you enough. Finally, I'm hoping that all you students out there are enjoying your summer so far. Thank you for your time, and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Alan?
Yes, Mr. Shahada.
I forgot something. Dr. D, get better. We need you. No insult, but take care of yourself, please. Sorry.
Commissioner Mejia?
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's having a great day so far. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it down today to watch the plays. I ran out of days, out of vacation days, sick days, from all the days I've been using throughout the year. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but hopefully this upcoming, once the New Year starts in August 1st, I get all my days back and I get to attend all these great events again. It's really hard to do all that because, you know, I'm young, I'm working really hard every day, and unfortunately, I don't have all the time in the world, like most of my colleagues, to attend all these other events. But thank you either way for the invitations. I'd like to congratulate all the fall student athletes who are currently working really hard out in the sun. I was driving past the other day by the stadium, and I saw many of them run, and I said to myself, wow, I remember those days, running up and down, up and down, so tiring, and I wish them the best of luck, especially because I know hopefully this year we go as far as we did last year, if not farther. I also want to congratulate all of our newly appointed administrators to their positions this upcoming year. Also, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Shahada as well as getting a position on this year's State Board of Education. And funny enough, I'd like to also congratulate Mr. Jengaro in this time where Dr. Robertozzi, he's in the hospital, going through some things here and there, but, you know, Mr. Jengaro was my vice principal back in middle school. So for me, it's really eye-opening to be able to work and collaborate with him hand on hand, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Commissioner Santiago?
Thank you, President Paris. Yes, Dr. Robertozzi, continuing to pray for you. I'm glad you are on the mend. Get back soon. Mr. Jengaro, congrats, and we are in capable hands. Thank you very much for your efforts and your work. Mr. Shahada, congratulations again. Awesome job. I just wanted to say congratulations again to all of our graduates last month, and I want to thank all the staff and everybody involved. It's a big undertaking, but those who coordinated and those who were involved that day, it runs like clockwork. It's amazing. It's very efficient. We have a lot of students, 700 or whatever it is, and it's like, it's like clockwork. So kudos to everybody involved. It was really good. Just want to say that July is ADA Pride Month, and what that celebrates and recognizes is the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it just recognizes, it celebrates the rights of those with disabilities as all of our rights are the same and celebrates all their contributions. So happy ADA Pride Month. Thank you to Assemblywoman Bagoli for coming and recognizing our Board. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Congrats to all of our staff who was promoted. Keep up the good work. Oh, I knew what it was. So we also have a summer graduation, August 9th, which I'm really excited about. It's the first time we're going to have that. So we have a handful, if you will, of students who, you know, maybe are one class, were one class behind, walking, couldn't walk, but did that work this summer, and they passed that class, one or two classes, and just a month later, they get their diploma, but they don't have that big celebration. So I'm really excited that we're going to give this to those students to recognize them, because what they did is just as important as what everybody else did a month ago, and also to celebrate that with their families. So I'm looking forward to that. It's August 9th. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Siano.
Thank you, President Paris. I want, yeah, that's it. I want to express how deeply honored I was to hand out diplomas for the first time to the Clifton High School graduating class of 2024. It was truly a special occasion for everyone. It was made even more meaningful to me by presenting diplomas to several individuals I've known for a few years, grown close to, and my cousin. To the graduates, I wish you all the best as you move forward. May your time in our district be filled with knowledge, experience, and fond memories that will serve you well in your future endeavors. Thank you, Mr. Doctor, for your report. It was very informative and thorough. I appreciate you being on top of this and keeping us up to date. Congrats to all the staff for the appointments tonight. I have nothing but excitement about your roles and look forward to all of you enhancing our district. Judy, I was honored to be there with you when you received your recognition that night, and I'm honored tonight that I was able to be here for this also. It's great to see everything that you're doing being paid forward to you. I'm grateful to have you really answering all my questions whenever I ask. Really, I'm just grateful to have your friendship, so. I would like to take a moment to commend Ahmed Shahada. I'm not going to be the only one that doesn't do it, sir. I sworn in to the state of New Jersey Board of Education. In the short time we've known each other, you've become a close friend and a reliable resource. You always answer my calls and texts, equipped with the information as if you knew I was going to be calling with those questions. The state of New Jersey and us are fortunate to have you. I believe this is just the beginning of your remarkable journey. I really think that you're just destined for greatness in this field. Danny Robertozzi, you are in my thoughts and prayers. I'm hoping for your speedy recovery, but in the meantime, even though I don't like his haircut, I know Mark Jengaro is going to do us proud. That's all. That's all I got for tonight. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Suarez.
Thank you, President Paris. Good evening, everyone. Since the last time we came together, I have had the pleasure to see stepping up ceremonies that I did not realize would have me reaching for tissues. It was so beautiful to witness the pride of teachers, students, and parents as they celebrated their not-so-little ones mature and progress towards middle school. It was, also was a sincere pleasure to witness our high school seniors graduate. I felt so honored to support the efforts in congratulating them as they proudly walked across the stage. I could not stop smiling. And congratulations to the summer graduates as well. And speaking of smiling, this morning, my cheeks were hurting from being amazed by the talent showcased in the amazing Finding Nemo performance put on by the IC program. The musicians were incredible. I thought it was such a nice touch to have high school students be teachers assistants to conduct many of the music pieces. And to wrap it all up was the funny and entertaining musical Finding Nemo. The children were spectacular, and it was such a sweet treat to watch. Thank you to all who made the IC program happen. What a treasure for the Clifton community. Lastly, and certainly not least, I would like to express my sincere honor and privilege to have witnessed my colleague, friend, and partner, Mr. Ahmed Shahada, for being appointed by Governor Murphy to be a member of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Earlier this year, within board meetings on multiple occasions, I have shared my appreciation and admiration for Clifton School District Administration because their commitment and dedication to and for our students was so evident to me. Having our very own Assistant Superintendent of Business being appointed to serve on the state level is further evidence of the commitment and dedication our administration has for not only our students in Clifton, but for public education as a whole. I am honored to serve in this board alongside Mr. Shahada because I know his heart and mind is geared towards advocating for the well-being of all students in Clifton and all over New Jersey. I would like to publicly congratulate Ahmed Shahada for his new role as New Jersey Board of Education member. Thank you, everyone, for your time. I truly hope that you are all enjoying your summer, and I look forward to meeting again next month, and my prayers to Dr. Robertozzi and your speedy recovery. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Vice President Danny.
So, Dr. Robertozzi, definitely speedy recovery. May everything go well. Mr. Shahada, congratulations. I don't want to keep going on with what everybody said, but definitely have. Yes, continue, okay. So I've seen, you know, the level of commitment that you put into this job and your attention to detail, and I am sure that on the state board, you will put that 125%, 200%, and our voices will be heard, and I think that that is great for you, for Clifton, for just the state. So congratulations again. Mr. Jangaro, I know that we are in good hands. I've spoken to you a few times, and I know that you really care and you're passionate about the district, and so I think that, you know, you will do great in his absence. Judy, we've been on this board for our whole entire year. Yes, yes, for our whole entire term, terms together. So, and I know personally how helpful you have been in special education issues, personally for what you've done for my family. Thank you. And, you know, it's nice that you were recognized. Congratulations to all the newly appointed vice principals and the principal. I am sure that you will do well, since many of you were in the interim position and your guidance, that you spoke about those that have helped you. So congratulations again. And to all the Clifton School employees, I hope that you are somehow finding a little time, even if you are in the building, to rest, for the teachers, for those even students, that you're just enjoying the remainder of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Danny. Well, it's hard to go last and not repeat anything, but there are some things worth repeating. One is congratulations to Mr. Shahada. The State Board of Education has gotten an unbelievably competent commissioner to represent, well, I know you represent more than us, but you're one of ours, so we feel, we feel you're on the team. But congratulations to you. It's an amazing accomplishment. The youngest board member in the history of New Jersey. That's absolutely amazing. But I wish you all the best in success in that role. Congratulations to our new administrators, and thank you for stepping up for our kids. Condolences to the shemp and whole families on your losses. Congratulations to the staff and student helpers that were responsible really for the result of this IC program that we witnessed today. The result was amazing. The kids were amazing. The talent's amazing. My granddaughter was a participant. She's a little one. She wasn't in the musical part, but she absolutely loved science and music and the arts every day. It's a fantastic program and wouldn't be possible without the wonderful staff and student helpers that are a part of it. To Mr. Jangaro. I like your haircut. Congratulations, and thank you for stepping up and being able to take us through this time. You've got some big shoes to fill, literally and figuratively, but we really appreciate you taking on this responsibility and helping us. And last but not least, to Dr. Robertozzi, I hope he isn't seeing this right now. But if he is, or if he plays it back at some point, just want him to know all the care and love that we have for him. We miss him greatly. We wish him the speediest recovery, and, but, take your time. Get it done right, and come back and we'll be stronger than ever. Okay, that's all I have. New business would be next, if there's any new business.
I have a question about the graduation, because I have to adjust my work schedule. Ten, how long you think it will take?
I would venture no more than an hour.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
If the big one is done in like 27 minutes, we should be.
Yeah, because then I can either get in early or stay late, but I can make up my time. Thank you.
Any other business comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to executive session at this point. We do have a number of issues that are personnel issues. Action will be taken, and it should take approximately 30 minutes. We should be back. And do I need a motion to?
Motion. Second.
Executive session.
Second.
By Commissioner Brunciac, seconded by Commissioner Siano.
Is Brett, 10-minute, 5-minute break?
5-minute break.
Congratulations, Danny.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
My name is Lisa. I'm going to give you guys a little pre-show treat, something new for you to share. Ms. Pennell and I have started a new course this year where we taught people lately at songwriting. And our fellow students have prepared some very great original songs and covers to perform for you guys. So, if you'd be willing to play a little bit of our transitions and our pre-show hangout. So, as we work, we want to have this little... These are the three amazing changes I've seen. Our first group is a phenomenal trio of ladies that wrote these original, all by themselves, zero out. Literally, I was out for a day, and I came in the next day and went to the streets and we showed them the show. It was like, and turning into a whole piece. Put out for the group, Chee, Chee Nuts. This represents a very memorable song by a popular artist from the United States. So, this was one of our original, our whole week is in middle school. They didn't really, we put a lot of songs together, but they really, we didn't want... She's like, "I'm going to look at your video." So, I was like, "I'll like them." And we had a little surprise. We have two singers sing this class. And we're going to do a little bit of a piece of version of "The Empire" by Ricky Raffino, featuring Manny and Kim Wood, as I said. About that performance, that song. And you probably don't realize it, but that song uses a set of chords that we can use in a middle-class class. But we have two or three students or seven players in it. And they were like, "Just a second." I found this kind of a hook. I chopped myself the chord, hit a switch with a glass, and then we played it. And it was like a horse. And they really just completely wowed me. And like, the second week, just teaching themselves all of these essential chords on the instrument and really others, right? Also, I'm going to say, my next group, we have a very special song next, but we're as soon as we can. I'll say, yeah, I should have started. Perfect, right? So, just give us one moment. Okay. So, our last song before we kick off is our third group. By our second tier of songwriters. And this song is very special. I asked, "What do you have in mind?" So, we wrote a song about IC. It's kind of like our theme song. We just, because it comes every day, I made a note of it. So, it's our IC edition. Hi, Chewy. Hi, Chewy.
...... Students at the round, as time goes by, shall they look upon the finals of the park and cast their honor? In the event of the emergency, we will send a text to the department here on the auditorium at this time. We have to be on all other project devices. The non-plant economy, as all this rank, and potential dangers and horrors on the stage. If you need to leave the auditorium, please consider to remember to thank you again as a player of the world on behalf of the students, teachers, and to help with the motions. Please enjoy the show.
Good morning, everybody. How are you today? You are in for a certain treat. Have you ordered the appetizers? The...
A mark. Mr. Mecca.
Are they being reported yet?
You are.
There'll be... EX1 through... Ex... On our meeting, 3 through 8.
EX?
Yep. What is that?
Got to do that first? Are we ready to go?
Yeah, Mark said we're live.
Okay. Okay, we're back. Roll call, Mr. Shahada.
Ms. Bassford?
Here.
Mr. Brunsack?
Here.
Kenova? Mr. Mahiab?
Here.
Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Ms. Siano?
Here.
Ms. Juarez?
Here.
Vice President Danny?
Here.
President Perez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. We're back from executive session. Would like to make a motion to approve under executive session items number 2 through 8.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Suarez.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bassford. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Shah.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Mahiab?
Yes.
Santiago?
Yes, abstain on EX8.
Ms. Siano?
Yes.
Ms. Juarez?
Yes.
Vice President Danny?
Yes.
President Perez?
Yes, abstaining on EX8 also.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Everybody. Second by everybody. Have a good...
Thanks.
See you next month.